Everybody. It's eight thirty, we'll get going. First item is the agenda.
I'm going to move to approve the agenda presented.
Moved and seconded. Any discussion? Michael, what do you think, all right? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. So unanimous. Next up is public comment. We have anybody here now? Everybody online? Where's got their hand up or wave or anything? Oh, okay. Approval of minutes of the November twenty first special.
I'm going to move to approve the minutes of the November twenty first, two thousand twenty three Commissioners' meeting.
Moved and seconded. Discussion, all in favor?
Aye.
So unanimous, UT.
I'm going to move to approve the UT report as presented.
Moved and seconded. Any discussion? Miller, anything to add?
Nothing, go ahead.
A good morning, by the way.
Good morning.
Well, all in favor?
Aye.
So unanimous. Discussions Eagle Island Fire Safety Needs. Miller?
Yeah, there's a thing in your packet from Mr. Ginn. And Mr. Ginn is online here this morning, he can speak to some of this, but we've been discussing this for, well, six or eight months now. And the residents of Eagle Island have concerns about fire safety. And they have a proposal. I'd like to turn this over to Mr. Ginn.
Yes, good morning Commissioners. So thank you very much for your time. Bill Ginn, I'm a resident of Eagle. Eagle's the largest of the thirty-four islands that fall under your jurisdiction as unorganized territories. It's also the most settled. We've got about twenty occupancies, residences, and about ten additional buildings. We feel that the fire needs of the island are increasing. We've got a lot of older forests, a lot of blowdowns. We see the potential of climate change impacting the island, and there are a lot of new threats. I mean, in the old days, nobody had electricity and batteries and power and the like. Now everybody has solar and batteries and, you know, there are other, other generators and the like, things that create, you know, potential fire hazards. So the island for a number of years has been thinking about, you know, what can we do? To try to reduce the potential for fire hazard and plan better for any emergencies or, or, or safety needs. And the committee's been meeting, and this is the result of their recommendations. There's, of course, a lot we can do just as citizens or in the prevention area in getting better organized. We're grateful for the nine-one-one system that the county manages. But we just recognize we're a long way from anybody. And if we have a true emergency, we've got to be organized to meet those needs. Largely, you know, through our own efforts, because it will take a long time for any emergency services to reach Eagle Island, should there be a major fire or, or personal emergency. So the plan is laid out there in front of you. We're asking for funding from the tax increment financing facility that the county has set aside for the unorganized territories. We qualify because of our status in, in the unorganized territories, we believe. And I think it's a well-thought-out plan that's been vetted by the fire marshal, by all the local fire departments that surround us on Deer Isle, and also some other fire departments that have experience dealing with islands like Freeport, which has settled islands like Boston's Island and, and the like. So we think it's a, a good and reasonable plan for us to work with the county to implement to meet our needs. And with that, I'd be happy to answer questions.
Mr. Ginn, I have a question right off the bat.
Sure.
That we discussed. This, uh, this unit that you're proposing to buy, does a place to house that in the wintertime? And is that place heated?
It's not heated, but yes, we do have, you know, a barn facility that we can, we can store it. It'll have to be drained. You know, the fire needs go down in the winter, of course, because, you know, there's a lot fewer people there. There's only three people on the island at this time of year. So, you know, our needs become more modest. The peak season really is during the, the summer, spring, and fall. And of course, we'll be able to have it charged and ready and available for, for that time.
Thank you.
Miller, the point of technicality here. The Eagle Island Association, a private association's been incorporated. Now, I know we can give TIF money to a private contractor for a municipal service. Was there any legal issue here of giving TIF money to a private corporation?
I'm not sure. It may be that, it may be this is a question for Malcolm Oma, but it may be that we can't give it to a private organization. It may be that we would have to buy this and just provide it out there as our unit that they have the use of. I'm not sure. I think that's a legal question that I can't answer.
Yeah, I might, I don't know the legal answer to that, honestly, but just as by background, the Eagle Island Association represents all the landowners on the island. It's been in existence for, oh, maybe thirty years. And takes responsibility for, you know, maintenance of what small shared infrastructure we have, wharfs and the, and the, and the like. And, you know, the truth is, as an unorganized territory, by definition, we don't have a local government. So a, a nonprofit organization is really the vehicle that we've established to conduct these shared activities. So it's not a, a private corporation in the sense of a for-profit, you know, entity. It's a, it's a public service-focused entity that has been established to service these needs. And hopefully that, that makes a difference in terms of the county's ability to fund this kind of activity. I do think there are a lot of local fire departments that are also nonprofits. Fire associations and the like that have been set up by towns over the years that are separate from government, but that function effectively. And the state law relative to liabilities also acknowledges that there will be associations, as they call them under the state law, that will receive funding for and support for fire activities in municipalities, and the same exemptions from liability that are afforded municipal governments are extended to those kinds of organizations if they receive public support of any sort. So it's just sort of a special situation, I think, but I think we're an important part of how we deliver services on, on islands. And I think there are others like Life Flight and the like, you know, that are in hospitals and ambulance corps that are all nonprofits that serve as communities. So I don't think this is precedent-breaking.
What's the difference between the association that, that you're talking about and a road association, for example, and the statute? Is it the same statute?
No, there's a special statute that addresses the liability issues of fire departments and fire associations. You know, the, the whole idea was to not, um, not create a situation where someone, a good Samaritan, was penalized for fighting a neighbor's fire and then gets sued because he didn't put it out fast enough or something like that. So there's a real, there's a body of law that was really designed to protect all of these volunteer fire departments across the state of Maine and shield them from liability and acknowledge their importance in the sort of infrastructure of providing services. So it's, it's specific to fire departments.
It, it may be as simple as your organization needs to rename itself and incorporate as the Eagle Island Volunteer Fire Department.
Well, yeah, I mean, I, I think it's.
Yeah, we don't know that.
Yeah, we don't, we don't know that. And, and of course, we're, you know, if the county wants to be creative and set up a fund under Miller's direction, for example, to disperse, you know, funds for, for projects. I mean, we're, we're completely fine with that. We're not expecting you to just send us a check, card, launch, but rather to have a process in which agreed-upon equipment as proposed, you know, properly vetted by the county officials is, you know, acquired and, and put into place.
Well, I don't want to throw up any roadblocks, and I believe that this is a good use of the TIF money. But, you know, I, and I'm badly familiar with, you know, using, using public funds for, you know, like, like to plow a private road, for example. And if we have a subdivision, Miller, in Plantation Eight, that has a road association, would that road association qualify for TIF monies for, you know, for upgrade, for example? And I'm just concerned that, first of all, is there anything in TIF that prohibits this? Because it's not going to a government agency ultimately. Second of all, is there something in statute that prohibits this? And can you research those and find a way to make this happen?
Are you giving me authority to contact Malcolm to get legal advice?
I don't know why Malcolm would be a point of contact for this. Malcolm Oma? A risk pool?
Yes.
Why is Risk Pool having anything to do with TIF monies?
I think probably better came, it might be.
I'm not sure that it's TIF money, but he usually gives us legal advice on the verbiage that we put in our contracts.
Uh, just a second.
So what I was saying is, since he's working with us on another one, probably Stephen Wagner might be the better person to just confirm that question with, because he deals with this stuff all the time.
Do you hear Michael, Miller?
Yes, I did.
Yeah, so.
So would, would action pending that be in order, or is that?
I, I guess it gets back to how quickly you need action. I mean, if it can wait two weeks and perhaps Miller getting an answer to those two questions in terms of, is there anything in the existing TIF that was set up that prevents that? And if there's anything in the statute, getting the answers to the questions, but ultimately.
I don't think there's a rush. I think we were looking at getting something in place for spring when fire season came started.
Yeah.
That's right. I, I, you know, I, I think, you know, if you need to resolve these legal questions, we're perfectly comfortable with that. And, you know, we, it'll take a two or three months to get this equipment and procure it that's, you know, gets busy in the spring for all these wildland firefighting equipment suppliers. But, uh, but we do have time, and if you want to resolve the, you know, perhaps you could approve the, the appropriation of these funds, subject to the advice of legal counsel, so that we can move forward when we get that, and.
So, so that's one option, or the other option is just.
I'd like to, I'd like to, I'd like to consider this a good first step towards getting that for Eagle Island. And I'd like to see what the results are of your inquiries on the legal matter of TIF monies and the association.
In other words, can we legally do this, is your question?
Right. Are there any legal impediments that can keep us from giving TIF money to a private association?
For this association.
Right.
Also, is, is this the amount they're looking for for the project? This twenty-nine?
Yes.
Yes.
And again, you've got the support. It's just a matter of making sure. Yeah, I, I think, I think you'll find that we're very supportive of this. We just need to know that we're, we don't want to have to reverse the process somewhere down the road because we've made a legal mistake.
Yeah, totally right. I realize that this is, you know, precedent-breaking here, and that we need to proceed thoughtfully. So we're, we're very supportive of that, and we appreciate your support for the concept. And if we can work together, just find the practical way to, to address the need. That's the main thing here, is to figure out how we address the, address the need.
What's interesting is that it really isn't precedent-setting. I recall several years ago, county should have gotten involved in, in assisting your ferry service.
All right.
That, the legislation to get that done. So I don't want you or Eagle Island to think that this is that same order of Commissioners, because I'm very, very receptive to assisting Eagle Island, so.
Well, thank you very much for, for that. And yes, I'm well aware of, you go back a long way, if you remember that, because I think that was close to twenty years ago. But, uh, but yes, that's right. There were a number of years when you helped us with the mailboat situation, and we do appreciate that. And look forward to a, you know, constructive relationship here to meet these needs, because the county really is the vehicle for us. Absent a local government or village corporation or some other mechanism, it's working through you that we can meet the needs here, and we appreciate your goodwill about that.
Thank you. Hey, so Miller, is it matching on us, right?
Yeah, but I do have one operational question. This, this skid, you were, was going to be mounted to a boat trailer?
Yes, uh, the, um, you know, we need a, an aluminum trailer that, you know, won't rust on a saltwater island. And the, the, we, after researching this, the, the cheapest thing to do is to buy a, you know, prefabricated aluminum boat trailer and then modify it to take the skid. And that allows us to use, you know, any, anyone's UTV or tractor. And we've got, you know, a number of those on the island, rather than having a dedicated vehicle. I mean, if you go look at, say, North Yarmouth Fire Department, they have their own Ranger, and it's all gussied up with all this equipment. Well, we know you're not going to buy us a, a four-wheel-drive Ranger for the island. And the best way is to put this on a trailer so that anybody's vehicle, should there be an emergency, can hook up to it and bring it to the fire pond and start providing water. So, you know, it's our way to try to keep the cost low, but to be flexible.
Well, and that was, that is, that was my question, is how you were going to get this to, you know, to, to where it was needed. And, and your plan actually sounds better, because then there's, you're not reliant on any one vehicle starting or whatever.
Yeah, I think that's exactly right. And, you know, the, the big challenge we have on an island like Eagle is we don't really have any roads. So, you know, the idea of a five-thousand-gallon tanker, like any town would put on the road for, you know, fighting a fire, we just can't, can't, can't be done. So we have to have this flexible, smaller equipment that we can get across these logging roads, wood roads, to the, the place of a fire. And so, you know, really, this is the professional advice that we've gotten from the Forest Service and from the local communities who've looked at our situation and said, you know, here's how we would do it, given your circumstances. So we're, we're, we're trying to follow through on, on that. And we look, you know, Deer Isle is going to help us with training and support. But they have to have something to work with so that they can actually help us. So this is our, our effort to do that.
Great, thank you. So we're, we're all set, Miller?
Yeah, Commissioner, this trailer would be similar to what they use when they're burning the blueberry fields, a trailer towed by a tractor with a water tank on it.
Yeah, yeah, exactly.
Yep. Okay, we're ready. And Miller, do you have everything you need from us to?
I, I think so. We need to talk to the attorney about using the TIF money and giving the TIF money to an association.
And, and to be clear, will you then take this up for final determination in your January meeting? Is that the next schedule, just so that I'm aware of the timing here?
No, we have one in two weeks.
Oh, you do? Okay.
I think you posted one that's going to be on the agenda.
Yeah.
All right, great. Thank you, Miller.
It'll be done as soon as December nineteenth.
All right.
Provided we have all the information.
Thank you very much.
Okay, thank you. Okay, next up is the ACO agreement between Hancock County and the UT.
I'm going to move to approve the ACO agreement between Hancock County and the unorganized territories.
Seconded. Moved and seconded. Miller, anything to add?
Well, I'm, I'm in, I'm in favor of it.
Okay, and, Michael, we're all set?
If you're happy with it, then we're good.
Yeah. Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
I'm going to move to approve the memorandum of understanding between Hancock County and the unorganized territory.
Seconded. Moved and seconded. Miller, anything to add? Cool, we're all set. All in favor?
Aye.
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 So unanimous. Report, airport.
I'm going to move to approve the airport report as presented.
Seconded. Moved and seconded. Leroy, anything to add?
Uh, nope, got nothing.
Michael, we're all set? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. So unanimous, EMA.
I'm going to move to approve the EMA report as presented.
Moved and seconded. Anything to add? I don't see anybody. Okay. We're all set. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. So unanimous, maintenance.
I'm going to move to approve the maintenance report as presented.
Seconded. Moved and seconded. I don't see.
I don't see him either.
So. We need to talk to him, so is he right?
Yeah, I want me to go down and see.
No.
I know, I know he's around. He was at the elevator just before I came down.
I have a telephone.
You may be surprised with this far ahead.
Okay, so monthly report, will, all in favor?
Aye.
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 So unanimous.
I'm going to move that we go ahead and wait for him. So I'm going to move to approve the ICC report as presented.
Okay, so we'll, we'll just.
Move back up.
Yeah, table, yeah. Okay, RCC. Moved and seconded. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. So unanimous. Next up is, when you see maintenance director, you'll, if somebody is directing, let us know. Somebody will, I hope. Okay, jail.
Okay. I was discussing about going on Sandy contracts. Well, today it's a discussion with her. I guess you got to put that on hold. Something that, also, if she wants, she's acquired of county's interest in doing her DM to be a county employee. So I don't know how the money would work. This, I just got that in the conversation with her, because she may be grant funding it. I don't even know if that's even possible to see any way that money could be moved through the county to pay this. So before we, that's just what she wants. Michael doesn't even know about it yet. I got to talk to Michael this week about it. Just, that's all I'm holding down, and that's where she would like to go. I don't know if that's a possibility, so. I'll raise something back on the nineteenth, if that's, that's okay with you.
Which article? Nurse, right?
Yeah, the nurse, yeah. She's requiring self-employment tags and such. Or something the county's interested in doing for the, I don't know the answer. Left it at that, I guess talk with Michael and have a little discussion to see if it's feasible. I don't believe it's possible to use that money that way. She should continue doing what she's doing for the week, if something's saying that. And we did find out what we're, that, that makes sense.
Okay, so we'll move on to the next item, Rustic Mental Health.
We used to have, yeah, we had a contract with the Rustic Mental Health that provided mental health services. They admitted one, they cannot fulfill the contract that we had, so that's why we moved on to Sarah Willet to fill the void that they could not have, they could not fill. And now to pass down from, through the state, that they no longer can will be assisted, will no longer be assisted with any, anything going on with, in the county jail. We used to have our contract, and the state paid everything above and beyond that contract. Now the state advises them, they can, they're a community base. They can only deal with, with the community. They've been pulled out of all kinds of jails, which includes the Rustic, Washington, and us, all the hospitals. They can't, they can't with the ERs anymore. That's the contract. So the contract was, I think, sixteen thousand, and now we see it's the same, but six-month contract, thirty-six thousand dollars. I was, was looking at another agency, but had not received any paperwork from any fair notice and costs and such. Being this late in the year, I don't see them coming forward with a proposal for the first of the year. And I need to do something to shore up the crisis pattern of mental health services for the county.
And we feel we can use the, the TIF funds.
That's what I'm required, if we can use that, the thirty-six thousand dollars to get us through the first six months of the year to find money for that. That's, unless we, just want me to try to take it out of, find it in my budget rather than as it is, but.
Well, I've said before, it's tough to find a good use for that money. And if this is an appropriate use, I can certainly support it.
Yeah, and I just feel that we're back to the former.
Well, I know it, but it's, it's a legal issue. Michael, do you know anything?
So if I reached out to the attorney, then I'll put this in a general memo, I gave you a guess. Of course, you know, they can't provide us with legal advice, but they don't want the liability. He referred us back to the section D essentially kind of the guidelines for approved uses. It refers to D four and D five, and section D itself is to address the needs of criminal justice-involved persons. Address the needs of persons with OUD and any co-occurring SUD slash MH conditions or involved in a risk of becoming involved in or transitioning out of the criminal justice system through evidence-based or evidence-informed programs or strategies that may include, but not limited to those that, and I know you're probably saying, what the heck does that mean? But, uh, you're four. Four is officer prevention strategies such as law enforcement assistance, diversion, weed mall. Or five, he references officer intervention strategies such as Lee County, Florida Adult Civil Citation Network, or the Chicago West Side Advice Diversion Treatment. So, in any event, so anyway, to look this back to what he was saying, is you can see that the provisions of those sections contemplate helping individuals with, with the OUD and a concurrent SUD slash MH condition, which is mental health condition. But basically what he's saying is, obviously, he, he can see, you can make an argument for it, but the, the key to it is searching programs in a way that, such as that, that are treating those that have that OUD as part of it. So it's focused more on them, not just general wide mental health. So he did reference me back to a gentleman in the governor's office that was appointed, who essentially deals with all this stuff. I did reach out to him yesterday afternoon. Left a message, but I haven't heard that from him yet. So there may be a way to do this, but I think it's all on how we structure it and how, I guess, whether or not it can pass the street face test.
Well, I read this as, you know, basically not answering the question.
Well, if that's they could, yeah.
Yeah, and I, I, you know, I think we can make a strong argument, and, and quite frankly, again, we're back in the corner. We're, we have to, we're mandated to provide these services in the jail, right?
Right.
And, but no mechanism to do so. So, I mean, I, I, I don't know. To me, this, if we, I think we can make a strong argument, there's some risk, but I don't see any other way.
I, we're close with Rich Roll, jail ministry in Washington County. They have just agreed to pay theirs out of this, being their, they're doing the same, same thing, just trying to get through the six-month period and to see what, and that theirs is being funded out of this grant.
Well, I'd get to, I'd get, yes, I'd get to see the opiate settlement enforcement police, so I'm not sure if anybody cares. So I mean, if it passes that straight face test.
Because it is, for current disorders, it's mental health, it's, it's people, I mean, it's.
I, I'm going to suggest that you and Michael get back, and if you can craft an agreement for us to sell it, we'll take it out of, 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 of settlement monies.
It sounds like they have one already drafted in Washington. They reached out to me on the advisory to move forward with what they have drafted. I said, I'm probably spoke to see if it's possible.
Well, I think.
So nineteen will, will, will have a, a draft of copy, and Mike can do it ahead of time.
Bring it back then.
Yeah, I think, I think it's a strong possibility, because I, quite frankly, don't see. Yeah, I think, I think it's a strong possibility, cause I, quite frankly, don't see any other way.
It gives us, you know, the time to figure out something. So, not necessarily try to do this to derail anything or not, but this again, and I know I'm beating my head against the wall and I probably don't understand anything, but this is when we really do need to go back again and start putting some hard pressure on, like at least our local legislative delegation. And say, look, you guys keep getting more money in at the state level, and yet you're pulling back on all these other things, or you're putting other laws in place that takes away our ability to fund stuff. So.
So, so.
Put your money where your mouth is.
Yeah, well, maybe, maybe what needs to happen, and we sort of talked about this during the VAC, uh, processes. Maybe we need to invite them to take a tour of the jail and have, you know, one or two of us there. Uh, because I, you know, just meeting with them doesn't have the same effect. I, I don't think. And my guess is that you are probably in contact with some of them.
The lady that was.
I see the sheriff raising his hand.
I just gonna say, Commissioner, we had Representative Milliken, who was on the budget committee, came and we, she, Tim and I spent two hours with her in the jail explaining to her, showing her the facility, and explaining to her the needs that we had and expressed to her that we have this lump of money that continues to grow per the settlement, for the opioid settlement. And we're hamstrung in what we can do with it. Uh, and she said that she realized what it was and was gonna try to do something. Now, I've never heard back from her. She wanted to go with a patrolman, and I haven't heard back from her on that either. So she's, she's well aware of, of, uh.
That's a federal issue, isn't it?
Yeah.
That's where it comes to, was federal settlement.
We have it filters through the state.
Correct. I'm not sure if the state didn't write the regulations.
No, no. The, the AG's office gets, I think it's like fifty percent of what the total settlement is that comes from the feds. And then it, then it graduates down to, you know, the counties and so forth and so on, but.
So maybe, maybe we need to, you know, do the same thing and involve, you know, our federal delegation, you know?
So I'm not suggesting, I mean, that's the thing. You would have to involve the federal, but whether or not these settlement funds at this point, whether or not the language or the purpose and all that. I mean, those were fought out between the attorneys of both parties for a long time, so I doubt there's gonna be much of a change to that.
Yeah.
But that still doesn't take us away from the underlying issue that the state keeps changing the laws and doesn't support. I mean, we did everything we could to get it on the list for additional funding for this year. And even though they have tons of extra money down there, that they're willing to brag about. I doubt we'll see any extra money come through, even though we showed them a bunch of mandates, along with every other county jail throughout the state. We showed them a bunch of mandates, which in my opinion, this is another one. If you take away our ability to be able to contract to somebody or require us to contract with somebody at a direct cost, and we can't come up with the money from any other way. That's, that's an unfounded mandate.
Well, that, yeah, yeah.
And that is a stated issue. Now, the settlement money, I don't know if we're gonna be able to get around that. And based on the requirement, it is gonna be hard, which is why I consulted with the AG, and that's why they sent me to the, the governor's office. Give us some plans and tell us how we're supposed to use this money. If not, then, then what are you gonna do?
Sheriff. I was gonna say, we've both, Tim and I have had conversations with Gordon Smith, and, and numerous times he said, if you need more money, get over us, or we'll call him and say, okay, we, we need this money for this, or we can't use it for that. We can't use it for that, well. You know, with all due respect, don't tell me, come ask you for money if, you know, if we can't use the money for projects and we need fund.
Can ARPA, I mean, there's some, I mean, I hate to use ARPA funds for operations, but isn't there, wasn't there some provisions in, in ARPA for mental health and?
I would have to look at that more. I couldn't, I wouldn't dare say to you that we could.
No, I, I'm not, I haven't.
I mean, I, I'm getting that whole revenue replacement idea, but that in and of itself, I mean, there's only so far you can take that, you know?
I will give hope, I'll, we can, we can afford Smith.
So, and that's.
That's what I thought too, too.
Also, using these grant funds here and there is, it's, it's a mandate, it's not a.
Yeah, that's wrong. It is a mandate.
And another one to call a spade to spade, the problem here is that, they, this is keeping a cap on what the counties can raise. And if they would, if they would give us the ability to decide ourselves how much money we want to raise to support the jail, you wouldn't be in this mess.
Right.
When they tell us you can only raise this amount of money, and then they were stating that's unable to subsidize the shortfall, that's where the problem is.
And then on top of that mandate services that we have to provide.
And the legislature is the problem because they're yielding to the pressure of the municipal, so.
Michael, we worked about trying to gain funding, this three hundred and fifty thousand dollars, that was real money we're trying to gain. He said, I don't, won't see any of it. Don't cover our shortfalls.
You have the matching orders?
So, so what, but what we do, you, you made a comment, or Michael made a comment on, you know, lobbying. What can we do? I mean.
Well, whenever I hear from them individually or as a group, it's always, tell us every, especially at the beginning of new session. You guys specifically tell us what you want the laws to build, pass, and give us something. You know, don't tell us after the fact or anything like that. You tell us. So what I'm suggesting is we get together and we put a bunch of these things together that we actually want. Now, the legislative session will be set for this next year as well. But the following session after that, make it very clear that these are issues to us. Yes, you're beating your head against the wall, because chances are, if history shows you, history hasn't done anything about it, but we don't have any other options. I mean, we're, we're, we're trying to spend money, but we don't have. And.
No, it's not that we're trying to, we're required to.
We have to, yeah.
Yeah, we're required to spend money.
But the reality is, we don't have it. So it's a catch twenty-two for us.
There's worse than that.
We really have to show that we have gone, especially with the new people, we've gone and tried to educate them as much as possible and get this before them. Because we can't keep doing the mandate that we're doing right now because we don't have it. We just don't have it.
Eventually, these things are gonna run out.
Well, we're at that point right now. I mean, we're beyond that.
A lot of the money you said, I'm gonna, should be six thousand dollars a year. Let's take one or another. That funds.
Yeah. So.
Yes, exactly.
Yeah.
Yeah, we.
We're good. Thank you.
Thank you.
We're back, we're back.
Okay, yeah. Uh, maintenance, we're at sheriff's office, steps update.
Uh, good morning.
Morning.
We're at Snowfall. So, uh, Mike Beck was in this morning, and, um, there, uh, plumbers have a bit more to install tubing, but they're still planning on pouring this thing, so they got a test of this tubing. This, I mean, we're talking fifties this weekend. Bound to weather next week. They have accelerants and so forth. They're still confident that that's gonna happen, so. Fingers crossed.
I'd like to have you, maybe you've already noticed it, but the drain that comes down, it goes down to the drain that's in the driveway.
Yeah.
In that, appears to be a cleanout. That cleanout is that far above the hot tub. You notice that?
Yes.
Right next to the retaining wall?
Yeah, that's gonna be covered by the slab and accessible to.
Covered by the slab? It's out in the hot tub. This is out in the hot, they hot-topped around it. It's got a, it's got a screw up, drain, uh, cover. It's right next to the, of the retaining wall, in front of the last door. And it sticks up three, four, five inch, four, four inches, and if it, if it survived this last storm, it's gonna get just, you try to plow it, it'll back that off.
Yeah, I thought that was temporary provision, to be honest with you.
It can't be, I, I, I wish I said it, this is that, I was down the other day, that they hot-topped, that they hot-topped right around it. It's obviously a permanent, and I talked to, I talked to the guy working, and I said, how long do you think that's come last? And he looked at it and said, maybe not long.
Not with plow.
Look at it, see what you're saying. It should be at least, at a, at a minimum, it should, put a cone over it or something, but.
I don't know what's going on with that.
It's not a long-term fix.
Okay.
Yes, and so, still on course, hopefully. Then we've got that, that storefront inside to deal with. And they haven't got all the information back on that. It looks like some of those tower windows we talked about briefly, it might be so much money. They're saying one window section, like seventy man.
Seven or seventeen?
Seventeen. So, that's something we may revisit when this, this hastes the issue, so. Explore different products, or, I mean, you could frame that, what a beautiful window in there. Fraction that goes.
Okay.
Still gathering information on that.
Okay, jail plumbing update.
Jail plumbing, uh, they've got the, uh, drawings of the space are completed. We're gonna meet with Dick Rollins and the plumber on Saturday, so it's a couple of days. Uh, and show, they wanna get a look at the underside, exactly what they're looking at, and above, to make their final recommendation with regard to the, these mitigation devices, the masturbators and so forth, that we're suggesting. So hopefully by next meeting, I'll have some, some information on the cost of that project, which I'll come over, we have it, and the lights have been a success. And hopefully the, the drain troubles will stay low-key to, to get to that.
Okay, old battery truck discussion.
As you know, uh, the sheriff's got the, the sewer process truck, uh, transferred over to us. He's, he's signed over the, the title, and Michael has sent it in for, for registration. Moved it up to the garage, now the old truck. I have a standing offer from the old truck, which is nine, running at this time, of a thousand dollars from one of my employees. And to be sold as his, whereas I think is something to consider.
Won't even stand to be put it on the front wall of the building.
No.
But, you know, Dennis and I talked about this, and let's just, uh, losses on this thing and whatnot. I'd like to move that we authorize the maintenance director to sell the old maintenance truck to anyone willing to pay more than nine hundred dollars. Is that different, guys?
Yeah, that's a motion. Moved and seconded, discussion?
There, there is issue with the title, which, which we had to send out, but couldn't find the title page.
Why's that?
I have no idea.
I used to keep the titles all in one place.
Yeah.
Yeah, we did. I don't know whether it's.
So we haven't done anything with that?
Copy of it, but not so.
We'll have to apply for lost title.
So we'll, uh, wait until that comes in.
Well, they're, they have one for parts.
He does, yeah. Technically, no, but if you put a motor in it or whatever, I'll just say, yeah, I think it's cleaner for us.
Sure it is, yeah.
And then, is there anything anywhere, disposition of public property that, that prevents us from doing what? But we have a motion, second, or I don't think so, right?
I think we have, we have a county policy.
Yeah, we have the county policy, and usually put things like that up there, but.
Is there a?
At least for sale, so I put it on the front wall, can't even get it out there, unless you want to be.
No, I just, I just, I, I am so, I'm sorry, so I just wanna make sure that we're not violating something that, I mean, I see.
We make an exception to our finering process, and I think at times we have to, right, we have to do that. This thing is not gonna yield a ton of money. Just get it out of there.
Yeah, and my feeling is you hand it to someone who has expectations that it's gonna be viable, or, or be, I believe the county should be in that position. With this, or with salvage item.
Yeah.
Vehicle.
Michael, are you comfortable with this, or?
Uh, give me two seconds if you want. Someone has a better answer.
Okay.
Nice one.
Technical guy. So one, uh, one thing is I, I didn't mention my report. We, we visited some two, uh, tower sites. Bull Hill and Waldo, and all is in good shape, good. We're gonna do something, but cut the brush back up at Bull Hill.
Did we just put a new generator up there?
That is, that hasn't been installed yet, but we, the composite is, and it's coming.
We didn't talk much about that, but is that just the standard?
No, it was a power plant, so.
It, it's an actual power.
More robust.
Designed to run several. Yeah, designed to run several days instead of.
Yes, but not just to stand by. It's, it's a little high wattage. It's similar to the one you have over at cemetery.
Which never worked.
Yeah, that.
We, we had a home gynecology condemned it, saw somebody's junk pile, sorry, no. Thank you anyways, I appreciate it.
Anyway, yeah. But this is a, uh, something that, if out for a week, it'll handle it. But there's, there's really nothing they make of that size that is going to just run continuously.
Get ready to.
Right, unless you get into, you know, many, thousands of ones.
It's, it's, I've said this before, I think, but it's ironic that we need backup power, that's sitting there next to the windows.
Yeah.
And, well, Drew, and, and Jermaine, to that point, we have, the big problem we had before was, we couldn't make the repair that we needed because this device that powered us was down in the pit of this elevator tower, which was twelve thousand volts, and they wouldn't allow us down there. So what we did, when they had their final, like, the first time ever, shut the whole grid down, we went in and we moved that transformer up in to the space where we could work on it. So if this ever occurred again, in a matter of a day or two, we could make that repair instead of six or eight months it was at the time, it's just ridiculous. So we have made that approved, at least. So, and anything that's, that looks like it's gonna be long-term, we can deal, address on several fronts now, instead of it just being a difference.
Okay, Michael.
So, uh, under your policy, normally you do the first half, that you just did, the department head would come to you and say, I've got this property in excess. Here's what my estimated value is, and if you agree to access that, the department head's authorized to do certain things. But in this case, with property slash equipment with a value of three hundred dollars or more, uh, the department head would have gained an estimate of the property's value post-nos and description of excess property equipment on the bulletin board outside the county commissioner's office for a period not less than fourteen days. Offer sale by negotiation to other county departments, and they offer some other county. And, and if not purchased by another department, advertised as a deal by sale bid, so. Smith and the county clerk presented to commissioner, explained the finer determination as to the disposal. Well, that's what the policy said.
And there's nothing in there that gives us an opportunity to leave that process.
If you have to go through the title search anyway, it's, it's gonna probably take thirty days. If the guy isn't already receiving.
Yeah, I say put it on the bulletin board, go through it.
Okay, commissioner's office, thank you for, for that. It makes it a bit. We did, so. So, I guess, I mean, it's silly, but it just. That's the problem with policies like this, that there, there's no opportunity to be practical.
Well, we can waive the policy.
Well, I mean, I, it, the vote's up to you, and obviously it's your decision, and, and the same thing. I mean, that policy, if you wanna, probably have to look at a lot, if you wanna put in a caveat to it, that's just what you need to do. I mean, I'm not arguing either way on this. You asked me a question.
Yeah.
I'm just giving you the answer, that's what you pay me to do, so now it's back in your car to kind of decide what you want to do.
Yeah, we ought to at least acknowledge, if, if, in your motion, we ought to at least acknowledge that we're waiving the policy.
If you're willing to do that, you know?
Yeah, and if I'm not, maybe I'm remembering Bar Harbor here instead of the county, but I thought you could waive policy with a unanimous, with a three-fifths vote or something like that, right? Or is that not the county?
I wouldn't, I think it's probably Bar, especially three-fifths vote.
Yeah, that's true.
Sheriff, you didn't need an improper truck, did you?
That's true. That's where it came from, yeah. Right?
It did, yeah.
Yeah.
Big business.
Yeah.
Go back to, no deposit, no return.
Yeah, no take backs.
As it were.
Okay, so you all right with that in your motion?
I'm going to move to acknowledge that we are waiving a county policy and authorize maintenance director to sell the old maintenance truck to anyone willing to pay more than nine hundred dollars.
Well, you said a thousand.
I'm saying, you pick us one nine hundred, go for it.
Seconded. Moved and seconded. All in favor?
Aye.
So unanimous. Okay, so.
Thanks very much, gentlemen.
Finished about maintenance, we're now at the jail, we're. Commissioner, about maintenance, we're now at the jail, we're in the courts.
I'm gonna move to approve a human resource report as presented.
Seconded, anything to add? So, Michael? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. No, I'm not, so, unanimous. Administrative assistant job description.
Well, we have a copy of the chair's draft suggestion. Gentlemen, I'm gonna tell you from experience that we should avoid, anytime we can, having an employee responsible to one administrator. Two years ago, we had a clerk, and it would be probably Mary Joanne's position, something like that, which was responsible to the county manager and the treasurer both, and that just caused And I'm gonna suggest that we remove the human resource manager from this, uh, job description, making this individual responsible solely to the county administrator. And I haven't looked through this to see whether or not that, that changes anything, not that this person couldn't be a resource to the human resource manager through the county administrators, but that only one person has the ability to supervise, to discipline, to evaluate, so on and so forth, and avoid the pitfalls that we saw a few years ago when we tried to, to do this.
Okay, so, where, what specific, like here, it says that this class is responsible for providing.
Go right back up to the top of the evaluation, it says responsible to the county administrator slash human resource manager.
Okay, so you would just, you, you wouldn't change?
I'm removing a human resource manager. And I guess asking Mary Ann and Michael, does, is there anything else we need to change in the body of this if we do that?
Was that second? Job summary, right, so it has.
But I don't. I, I think that would be the question, as long as you're not dictating or have an issue with saying that that disposition that we're outlining, because that really is a bulk of what the clerk position in the past, and, and we can get to the discussion of clerking in a second as to rational why that name would drop, but, um, I mean, the, the, the human resource payroll part of it is, is a big part of what you, so that, that function responsibility still has to be assigned to this position, now whether or not, you know, I still have ultimate oversight as Commissioner Clark's mentioned, I mean, I.
And I think that first paragraph, that first sentence, uh, in the second paragraph should stay there because, right, because we want this person to be providing basic secretarial administrative support to the human resource. So nothing says that.
The last sentence.
What'd it say? General supervision.
I think that's fine, too.
Uh, well, as long as the supervision, and that was one of the issues we had with court decision in treasurer's office, is that if you were getting conflicting supervisory directions from county administrator and, and the treasurer. So as long as we don't think that this is going to cause an issue.
I, I, as I, as I read this, Michael is, I'm fine with this, and I'm fine with prob, just where it says responsible to county administrator, because I, I, I totally agree with this job description. It's just, it does make sense that I have.
I mean, I think the reality of what the question you just asked, at the end of the day, I mean, I also technically supervise the, the HR person, so I mean.
That's true, too.
You know, so the reality is the county administrator would rule in this case, and if there was an issue, you know, I'd have to work it out with that person, or they'll, they'll have to be in the struggle, but I would still be given the direction for the, to the individual. Not that, not that we would, though. You know? So, but.
Does that, that changes a lot for me, I don't know how you vote. So, where are we here, where?
What are we doing? Am we just, are we, are you suggesting something other than?
No, I'm saying that at, at the end of the day, if it came down, if your concern was about the general supervision not keeping it in there, I mean, you can remove it, obviously, you have to approve these, but if your concern is that leaving it in is gonna create a conflict between myself and the human resource manager, the county administrator, and that, I mean, ultimately, as far as I see it, the county administrator would prevail anyway.
Yeah.
Uh, but.
Right now, right now, you guys get along good. But there could come a situation, and that's what he's trying to avoid, of, of one person being deciding who the, who's in charge.
If Mary Ann was to get her own clerk for her or whatnot, you wouldn't have any authority over that. No, no, even though you manage Mary Ann, you wouldn't have authority, and the problem is, is if Mary Ann takes a position that if she supervises this person and makes a supervisory decision, you can't overrule it. I, I just don't wanna get into that, that's, and I've seen it happen.
I mean, I, I don't have a problem with it, I mean, I've let Mary Ann speak for herself, I mean, at the end of the day.
I mean, if you're trying to look forward, just make sure that there are conflicts in the future, I understand that. Trying to figure out and eliminate any, uh, miscommunication. Because we get along doesn't mean in the future, twenty years down the road, the next group of people will be able to get along.
So you're suggesting, you know, we just change responsible to county administrator, remove and left, leave the rest of this as.
Remove human resource manager from responsible to, everything else stays the same.
So last section, part two, just summary, where it says, um, it's performed on the general supervision of the county administrator and human resource manager, was the question that I had, or what I was trying to address, is are you okay with that, then? Or should that also be removed?
I'm okay with that. Because I get the responsible to, I mean, I understand that, but I, I was talking more, because I thought that was the question we moved on to now. No, I, I, just that, I'm fine with the rest of this. And I would take no suggestion on their, on the responsible to.
Yeah, you're talking about the last sentence and the second.
Yeah, the second, yeah.
Right, under personnel.
So word may be of confidence in nature, it's performed on the general supervision of the county administrator and human resource manager.
Yeah.
So if you guys are fine with that, I'm not trying to create a problem, I just thought you'd ask that question.
I think that's fine.
I mean, I think we're fine, but as long as you're okay that you think responsible to is enough for the, for the county administrator.
I do.
I would, too.
I think the motion is to approve the administrative assistant job description as presented, with the exception of removing the human resource manager from being responsible to supervision and authorize the human resource manager to post the opening in-house for the next ten days.
Moving second, and that, everybody's clear what that means, that that just means from the responsible to, removing human resource manager. Everybody's clear?
Yeah.
Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. So unanimous. Pleasure improvement, the bills and warrants, Monica?
I'm gonna move to approve the monthly bills and warrants as presented.
Seconded. Move and seconded, Monica, or Michael, anything to add? All in favor?
Aye.
So unanimous. Commissioners, review, discuss, and approve the.
I'm gonna move to approve the two thousand twenty-four employee health insurance buyout buydown policy base at thirty-five percent as presented.
Seconded. Move and seconded. Any discussion? And, Michael?
You guys are happy?
Yeah. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
I'm gonna move to set the retiree health insurance contribution to. Michael, what did you have to recommend?
So there was some discussion, I guess, that we wanted to, and I included that in a copy of Monica's email, I don't know if Monica wants that. Comment on that or not, or put it on the spot, but, but there just has been some question in the past in terms of how that was calculated and the rate differences. But before we recommended that you go ahead, I.
That's that, that's that email that's in our package.
Yeah, right, so we provided you with a rate breakdown and then the email from her as well.
Okay.
At some point in the past, someone reached a, an agreement that the amount of the monthly coverage was a certain amount, and the only increase they were making every year to the rate was the amount that the rate increased for the county. Without looking at the rate and without making sure that the rates were consistent and that the county wasn't losing money on, on retiree insurance. Uh, and so, instead of, to me, um, to me, the county is losing a little bit of money, and instead of this forty-four dollars plus the little bit of increase every year, forty-four dollars, forty-five dollars, this little small increase, the current for, for twenty twenty-four, it should be seventy-one, um.
Seventy-one twenty-eight?
No, that would be for this year, that is what they should be paying, and then for the new year, the new rate will be, uh.
Ninety-six seventy?
Yeah.
Well, and that's happened because women kept, women kept up.
Actually, it's one twelve twenty-four is the last, the last number in mine, in bold.
Oh, the ring would have been.
Ninety-six would have been for the current year.
Yeah, 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 yeah. This would mean the.
So, I mean, there are eight retirees that this affects. They, they might not like it, but, um, in reality, I feel like this is what the calculations come out to, and.
Well, it's only gonna get worse.
Right.
Yeah.
So, which retirees have paid this? Some retirees get.
The list of eight, I don't know, but I should be.
No, no, I, I don't think that, that's, under what conditions do you? Some people, some retirees get the lifetime health insurance, right? Paid for by the county. Single subscriber health insurance, right? And this is a contribution towards that?
Yes, yes. Yes, it's paid for through Allegiant, and this is their contribution.
And how does the one twelve, how does the one twelve match with the full-time way you pay for a single subscriber plan?
Well, this would be, uh, one twelve per month, and I don't have my, I don't have the health insurance rates, but everybody else is paying like sixty bucks a week.
Yeah.
No, I, we've gotta keep, but this is gonna, if we don't, this is only gonna get worse.
Time to get it corrected.
Yeah, because I know it's a huge increase, but it's nothing compared to what it's gonna.
And that's, that get correctly, yeah, I mean, uh, for, for those who receive the supplemental health insurance, they get an allowance of two hundred, up to two hundred and fifty towards their health insurance. This would be, they would, this, to meet that two hundred and fifty, they'd be paying the difference, which would be the one twelve sixty-four. Would bring them in line with the other retirees that are receiving that two hundred and fifty dollar allowance.
You don't stand with?
vaguely, I do.
Because the full, the full rate that we pay for the retirees is three sixty-two. So if you took away the two hundred and fifty dollar allowance, the remainder would be that one twelve twenty-four. That's they, to me, that they should be paying.
So basically, the county has been subsidizing a certain percentage above and beyond the two fifty for these other. People.
We following that?
Yeah, I'm, no. I may have a real problem with increasing that by.
Right, and, and this is just a suggestion, if you, if you guys wanna come up, if you want me to come up, us to come up with a different formula, um, that's more reasonable than.
So the other thing that I'm wondering is whether we could try to do a phased approach over
Yeah.
a certain time period, now, we haven't talked, we haven't even talked about that, but yeah, I mean, one would still face it in over two years.
This is what, this is almost, uh, what, a hundred and fifty percent increase? Well, eighty-eight would be, eighty-eight sixty-two would be a hundred percent increase.
Yeah, yeah. Hundred and fifty would be. Yeah, so it's just shy.
Okay, so, what's a seventy-five percent increase on forty-four thirty-one? Oh, there, uh, one.
Uh, it would bring it up to about seventy, seventy-seven dollars, seventy-eight dollars.
Yeah, seventy-eight.
I would, I would move that we were just seventy-five dollars here this year, and then next assembly, we locate it again to see if we wanna get it closer to what, what are the complete profit numbers.
Well, and that, well.
That, that brings it a little more in line, like, like Michael suggested, sort of.
So obviously about more, but you're saying for this year, you're, this is your first step, and then you'll have to readdress again next year.
Well, why readdress, why not, I mean, we've got, the formula is the formula. That, that's the part that I.
Question, the problem. Let's just take it from the sets of, you got a bunch of older retirees that may be living on closer to a fixed income. Yeah, it's gonna be a jump up. Take the pay, so.
Yeah, but the county is having to pay them.
Okay, and we acknowledge that, not just saying, you know, I mean, we've got a class of, of employees down there, whatnot, end up getting a couple hundred dollars more a week, increased salary and whatnot, we're gonna increase their, their monthly payments by, by less than forty dollars. We've got retirees out there on a fixed income and whatnot, and you wanna increase theirs by, by a hundred and fifty bucks.
Yeah, percent.
Hundred and fifty percent, I'm just saying that, uh, we, we let them know, and that your problem fixes problems, it's just, it takes two years to grow.
Yeah, that's what I, I agree, yeah, I agree with that.
If you agree, then I'm going to move to set the retiree health insurance contribution for two thousand twenty-four at seventy-five dollars a month.
You don't wanna go to what that?
I'm going to seventy-five dollars.
Want to? Instead of the seventy-seven fifty-four, the.
I'd like round.
Okay, is there a second?
I'll say.
Okay, then we're gonna deal with the problem again next year, or you're not gonna, you're not gonna fix it all?
This, Michelle, this is for the retirees that are already on the program, there's eight of them. This is different than setting the retiree rates for, for regular health insurance.
Right. Okay, that's, that's your motion?
Aye, second.
Seconded. Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. So unanimous.
I'm gonna move to approve Commissioner John Wambacher as Hancock County's risk pool board member for two thousand twenty-four, and to select Michael Crocker as his proxy.
Seconded. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
I'm gonna move to approve Commissioner John Wambacher as Hancock County's main county commissioner association board member for two thousand twenty-four, and to select Michael Crocker as his proxy.
Seconded. Move and seconded. Any discussion, all in favor?
Aye. I'm going to move to approve a point, Michael Crocker as Hancock County's point of contact with the risk.
Seconded. Move and seconded, all in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Otherwise, I didn't ask for discussion.
Oh, I see.
Okay, budget. Michael, do you wanna introduce it, or you?
So, I, yes, I can. We, we need a couple, well, made a change, which we sent back to you with an updated. But right now, based upon our understanding of what was discussed at the last meeting, we have requiremental expenditures listed as eight million nine hundred sixty thousand six hundred eighty-four. we have requiremental expenditures listed as 8,960,684. The jail cap figure is 2,211,042, which gives total expenditures of 11,171,726. Revenues as listed, which was the number that we had changed to bring Department 12 in line, is 2,564,633, which gives you a amount for 2024 as posed right now, based upon our understanding of what you are looking to approve, to 8,607,93. And 2023, that was 7,392,782, which equates to an increase of 1,214,311, or 16.343%. Calculating the LD1 growth, in terms of the limit of 624 and 561,915, this budget amount, if you prove at this rate, would be 652,395.31 above the LD1 target.
Okay, questions, or?
So if you go to approve this as presented, then obviously you will need to vote to exceed, which I did give you kind of a draft of possible motion. But essentially, you'd be looking at what's referred to in the statute as the extraordinary circumstances. And it's my understanding the budget advisory committee did vote in majority to exceed that limit as well.
So I'm going to move to exceed the county assessment limit for 2024 Hancock County budget.
Seconded. Moving to seconded, any discussion? Reluctantly, all in favor?
Aye.
So unanimous, and it has to be unanimous. Okay, right?
I believe the statute says majority, but.
It's just majority.
Yeah, so you could have two-thirds of you, but.
Who was unanimous?
Stan was right.
Get out of the budget.
Okay, I'm going to move to approve, signed, 2024 Hancock County budget of 11,171,726 as presented, with an amount of 8,607.93 to be raised, 8,607,93 to be raised through taxation, representing a 16.43% increase of 1,214,311 dollar increase for the 23 amount raised through taxation, and 652,395.31 for the LD1 target.
Seconded. Moving on, seconded. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
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 So unanimous. That's a big one. Okay, ready to move on? Next item is. Executive session with legal counsel. Oh, I'll read it. Executive session, MRSA 405, 6C and E, consultation with legal counsel for the county concerning tax increment financing and credit enhancement agreement proposal by three rivers. No, somebody needs to.
If you have, give me a chance, you have a chance. Okay, I'm going to move to an executive session for Zords MRSA 405, Section 6, subsection C and E, consult, consultation with legal counsel for the county concerning a tax increment financing and credit enhancement agreement proposal with three rivers.
Seconded. Moving on, seconded, any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
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 So unanimous, we'll take a short break to wind down.